I'm going to wear royal shirts. I'm not going to suck up.
Officially laid, let her rip. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm sure the council president's... There he is. Well, we're going to get started here in a moment. Thanks, everybody, for coming this evening. I think I speak for everybody in the governing body when I say we love to see a full house. I know that some people don't believe that, but it is the truth. We've got a work session this evening. And the only agenda item on the work session is presentation on the Gardner golf course. And Scott Gary, you're going to kick things off for us, yes?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to be brief with this introduction because I know we have a limited amount of time and quite a bit of information. And so what we have tonight is Jim Keegan with Golf Convergence, who's going to give us a presentation and an overview of where things are with the golf course. Certainly, a lot more information than we had the last time that I was up here. We commissioned this assessment because of the 30-year operating lease expiring in August of 2018. Getting direction from the city council, should they decide to take over the management, would have a lead time of nine months to one year. Equipment have to be purchased, staff have to be hired, buildings and other areas brought to code, enhancements to the course would need to be made to the course to ensure the asset provided to our citizens was consistent with the quality of life that we aspire to provide to our citizens. And so, as Ben Hogan once said, "The most important shot in golf is the next one," which leads me to introduce Jim Keegan. Jim Keegan is with Golf Convergence. He's an expert in the area of golf course operations and management. As a managing principal, Keegan has traveled in excess of 2.5 million miles, visiting over 250 courses annually, and meeting with owners and key management personnel at more than 4,000 courses. As an accomplished writer, Keegan published in June 2010 the award-winning book, "The Business of Golf: What Are You Thinking? How to Maximize the Financial Return of a Golf Course." This book has been purchased in 16 countries and is being utilized at 15 universities. In 2013, Keegan published "The Business of Golf: Why, How, and What: A Field Book for Seasoned Professionals." Currently, he serves on a panelist for Golf Magazine's Top 100 Golf Courses. He is a former member of the Club Managers Association of America and the National Golf Course Owners Association, and is a current member of the National Golf Foundation and the International Network of Golf. Keegan is a former volunteer of the Colorado Golf Association and the USGA Sectional Affairs Committee. Jim has served as a course raider and rules official for numerous tournaments, including the local and sectional qualifying for the U.S. Open and the World Club Championship. Jim is a certified public accountant with a BBA degree from Texas Christian University. He earned an MBA in Corporate Finance from the University of Michigan, and he's also served as a captain in the United States Air Force and worked at KPMG as a computer audit specialist. So I will now introduce Jim Keegan.
Scott, thank you. Can you all hear in the back reasonably well? Because I want to make sure that you can listen to this presentation. Mayor, it's an absolute pleasure to be here. City council members, I actually sort of felt like I was at home driving into town from the airport. I saw several cars that had Denver Bronco license plates on them. And I looked at your special, you're running for $30 tickets, but there's no divisional rivals in that special for Gardner at $30, or I would have actually been buying some while I was here. Well, we're here today at this workshop, and what we want to do is talk about the starting point of the golf course from 30 years ago. And question, what is the role of government? What was the research process we used? And what were the seven steps that we found as we go through this? And then talk to you about some viable alternatives and their hurdles. Scott was very kind in talking about my background. I have seen over 4,000 of the world's 34,000 golf courses. I've been in 49 countries. And outliers, Malcolm Gladwell says, if you have the 10,000 hours... I've got about 60,000 hours. Mario Indurty has an expression, "If you enjoy your job, you need no hobbies." I love what I do. It's really a pleasure to be here, to share with you a vision for the golf course and what can ultimately happen with it. All of this knowledge has been reflected in the books that Scott referenced. And I want to take a minute, because 30 years, the Pruitt family, and Kurt and Jim have provided a recreational amenity to the city in which the city's investment has been nominal. This is really exceptional and unparalleled when you look at municipal golf courses across the country where one-third of all municipalities are losing money in excess of $200,000 a year in the operation of a golf course. And so I wanted to just take a minute to salute Kurt and his family of 30 years, because what they've gotten caught up in is the contraction within the golf industry. There are less people playing that we're going to cover. Well, what questions we were asked to answer were, should this city assume the operation of the golf course when the lease expires? Does it make any economic sense to buy out the lease? Is it currently viable as an operating entity? Is there a sufficient supply of golf courses within the local community in close proximity that the ability to play golf for these fine citizens, that they have alternatives? Would a national management company, would a Billy Casper, Kemper Sports, a Touchstone come in and want to manage this golf course? Their fees are $75,000 to $125,000. I'm working in Baltimore, Albuquerque, right this minute, on answering that question in New Braunfels. But what about a third-party lease? Is there anybody interested in leasing the golf course from the city? And what capital would be required to get the lease into place? But often, it's not important to what I was asked to answer, but for you to have an understanding what we weren't asked to address. What's the highest and best use of the land? Is it a golf course? Is it a residence? Is it commercial? Is it where the city center should go? What are the additional resident units surrounding... Would they be viable? What's the cost to mitigate the drilling on the property? The underlying land rights are owned by somebody else. The electrical lines that go across the course or to undertake appropriate tree mitigation? What's the implication of the proposed bike trail that's going to go around the golf course? Does that limit the options? And what would be the ideal site for the Gardner community center? Would it be there in a town that's growing south? I don't have the answers, but I can ask the rhetorical question. Well, let's look at the asset. You've got a 30-year concessionaire who owns a makeshift clubhouse. If you go to Wolf Creek, or if you go to Sycamore Highlands or Prairie Highlands, you see really nice facilities in today's marketplace. They own the equipment. Jim's 82 years old. Is he about to retire? I know if I was in his position as, you know, Kurt's dead, I'd be wanting to retire. And they're obligated to remove the building if and when the lease expires, should you choose not to buy it out. Well, the lessee was requesting $300,000, and it's my understanding over a weekend of conversation, they might even take $150,000 for the fixed assets. The course is in extremely poor condition. I was out there this afternoon. I looked at the 10th, the 12th, the 15th, the third greens. I say, sort of disappointingly, it's probably the second worst course I've ever seen of all the courses I've seen in terms of conditioning. Ted McElhenney in Honolulu, Hawaii, is another one where the conditions are of the same. The equipment's only worth the scrap value. For you to go out and buy the necessary equipment to maintain the golf course, 18 holes, it's about $550,000. The maintenance building, not in compliance with code. If you were to take over the operation of the golf course, you're going to have to buy it, build a new one. The old clubhouse that's got asbestos and mold in it, the white building that you go past, should come down. The clubhouse is modular. And there are golf courses that I'm going to show you that meet every need within a 15-mile area for a novice recreational amateur, private club, or purist. It's adequately provided. So golf as a sport is adequately provided. And you've got the six homes. Well, there's numerous permutations that are almost limitless, that every time you look at a solution, and what is it? Well, this chart, which will be probably a little hard for the audience to see, really comes down to a fundamental question. Are you willing to spend money for the golf course, yes or no? If you say no, would they be willing to extend the lease? Or do you close the golf course? Which raises the higher question is, what are you going to do with it? Maintain as an open park space? Build a community center, residential? If you're willing to spend capital, the question becomes, how deep are your pocketbooks? $25,000 may help the Pruitt's if they extend the lease. A new lessee may require over $1 million for a nine-hole golf course. The irrigation system, $750,000 to rebuild tee, greens, and bunkers, you're looking at another $300,000. If you operated it, you'd still need the same amount of capital. If you chose to keep it as an 18-hole course, you're at a minimum of $1,008,000. If you wanted to build something like Sycamore, you're at between $6.5 and $8.5 million without a clubhouse. And you're going to be around $11 million to build a competitive facility in the marketplace. Well, I love this expression, "In the beginner's mind, there's many possibilities; in the expert's mind, there are few." And we're going to give you a clear direction in which I think you should go. But let's look at the facts. What's the role of government? Police, fire, utilities, water, they're the essential things that you need to provide. The second role of government is to provide that which private enterprise would not undertake: ball fields, libraries, parks, swimming pools. And in this national model adopted by Parks and Rec, golf is deemed to be discretionary. To provide for citizens that would... Private enterprise would not otherwise undertake is the role of government. And so golf becomes a discretionary asset, and you're finding more and more municipalities doing away with golf. But it's a tough task. City council, you're fiscally responsible. Your stewards are their resources. The golfers, only 1 in 6 of the citizens play golf. As you'll see in a survey, they're looking for low prices. They tend to be resource consumptive. The staff is capital-starved. They work long hours, low morale. And the public says... Let me see if I understand this. The average golfer in America is 45 years of age, whose median household income is $96,000. And you want to support with public funds the leisure of the wealthy. So how do you balance all of this in an equation? I'm glad I'm standing here versus sitting there, because it becomes a tough decision in meeting the needs of these fine people. Because there's many headwinds in golf. Supply, nationally, supply exceeds demand. Weather, rain, snow, technology, the internet, social. We live in a time crunch culture. When I grew up, there were no Saturdays or Sundays working. There was no Twitter, or Facebook, or no internet. The father would come home. Back then, the mother was principally a homemaker, not a breadwinner, as in 80% of the cases today. The whole culture of our society has changed. And the expenses of water, electricity, fertilizer, labor, benefits, it's expensive. So here's the fundamental question you have to ask yourself. I can give you a lot of facts on the golf course, but you need to ask yourself a question. Should the golf be held to a financial standard? Or is it a recreational asset like a swimming pool, a library, or park that has an intangible value that should be subsidized? Because the Gardner Municipal Golf Course cannot economically stand on its own in this marketplace. So the question is, should it be subsidized? And if so, you saw the numbers, could start at $25,000 to $11.5 million of subsidy. So you're behind the eight ball until you make that decision. So our goal is to help you understand the business of golf, and this is the research process that we employ. We look at the local market, supply and demand, the age, the ethnicity, the number of golfers per 18 holes. We look at weather, how many playable days do you have? Look at how technology's being used, and then we benchmark your course against national standards. We looked at the facilities and the experience that's being provided. We looked at the operations. I came here in May and secret chopped the course, taking 120 photographs. We brought in Andy Staples, a member of the American Society of Golf Course Architects, who's a specialist in water and electrical conservation, and saying, "What are the opportunities here?" We also did a survey of the customers. We had over 500 people respond to a survey. This is the golf course, and it's up on the lake. The water's free. If you were paying for water, that would automatically be a disqualifier right now if you're paying more than $1.20 per 1,000 gallons. You're fortunate that your source of water's free. But here are the six numbers that determine. What's the mosaic profile of your residents within 10 miles? What's their income, the age, ethnicity? How many golfers per 18 holes? And what's the slope rating? And only all of those have to be in place before you have a chance for an economically viable golf course. Most people don't know what the mosaic profile is, but Experian has put every one of us into one of these categories. Career, family, comfortably retired, bourgeoisie, prosperity, hard-working, blue collar. And what we know from research is that 80% of the golfers are either sophisticated sales, bourgeoisie, prosperity, career, and family, or comfortably retired. You will not find golfers among metropolitan strugglers, or routine service workers, or hard-working, blue collar. Why? It's an expensive game, and it takes a lot of time and effort to be able to play it at a level to even enjoy it. So when we looked at this community, your mosaic profile is really favorable. You're plus 33. You have 37% more career and family than exist in America. You have less 12% metropolitan strugglers. So if you had come to me and said, "Do we have the background in our community of people that would support a golf course?" The answer is yes, based on the mosaic profile. But then, when we look at the demographics, look at the median household income within 10 miles versus the national average. And that we know the likely golfer income based on the relationship of the median household income at $52,000 in America to what the average golfer should be about $100,000 to $124,000. And the ethnicity, for every one round, an African-American or Hispanic-American plays, seven rounds are played by Caucasians. For every one round, an Asian-American plays, four rounds are played by Caucasians. So if we love to see areas where we have a heavy concentration of Caucasians or Asians because of the propensity to play, this is like we're making a decision, where do we put a Mercedes dealership or a Chevrolet? It's based on the demographics. But it doesn't translate to strong demand. Within 10 miles, there's 15,000 golfers. They play 242,000 rounds. But the rounds per course within 10 miles is only 26,000 rounds as a potential versus a national average of 30. And here's the key statistics. The golfers per facility, 2,283 in major metropolitan areas. You only have 1,897. So that would suggest your supply exceeds demand in this marketplace at the current time, as of today. That doesn't speak to the growth of your community and what it may be in five or 10 years. But if we determine what's your likely revenue if we had an 18-hole golf course, you're probably doing $250,000 to $300,000 right now. The maximum potential you could do is about $750,000. Look at Overland Park that I put in as a contrast in terms of the rounds per course, and we talked to Kurt Nelson, and formerly Sandy Queen. I've known Sandy since 1989. And what's the green fee potential prior to carts? So if we look at this and summarize, the difference is currently getting green fee in carts at $20 versus Overland Park. We took the 44 variables. This is kind of like Rain Man, something Dustin Hoffman would do. I made over 2 million calculations, and I rank ordered the profitability of every golf course in America from 1,000 to 15,204. And Gardner, based on its demographics, at about 5,580,000. Well, 34% of the courses in America have less than 1,000 golfers. 41% of the courses have residents within 10 miles that spend less than $1 million. So of the 15,000 courses, you're going to hear about another 3,000 to 4,000 close over the next five years. The NGF doesn't think supply and demand will be in balance until the year 2030. So if we look at the market analysis, the profile's very positive. People that love the game, look at the people that have come out. But demand slightly exceeds supply nationally, but not based in the core base. Here's some statistics. The number of golfers in the last 10 years has fallen from 30 million to less than 23,500. The number of golf courses in America, in terms of equivalents, has fallen from 16,000 to 14,000. The number of golfers per 18 holes has fallen from 1,882 to 16,87. You can see the number of rounds nationally has fallen from 37,000 to 32,000. Time, cost, and difficulty are cited as the reason for the decline. Not a bright picture. So we looked at the weather, and you have 247 playable days of golf a year, defined between the temperatures of 45 and 90 degrees with less than 2/10 of an inch of rain. And we use this so that we can measure the revenue. 2012 was probably a good year for the golf course. There's a direct correlation. For every 1 degree, the temperature's up, rounds are up 1%. Direct correlation. And your capacity is, you could do 64,000 rounds from sunup to sundown on an 8-minute interval, but currently, you're only doing 15,000 rounds, which is 23% of capacity nationally. It's only at 52% of capacity. As much as I fly, I wish the airlines were at 52% of capacity versus their fault. We looked at technology, and this is the website. If you were to take over the course and buy out the lease, have limited online reservations, there's no email database, there's no customer spending history, basically operating a cashier. And so if I wanted to take over a business and I was buying a business, as you would be in buying a lease, would I like to have the customer list? Would I like to know who those customers were and how much they spent? You're starting blind. So we developed these nine models, and we ran all kinds of permutations, from closing the course and then banning it and removing the two buildings. You're probably going to have to spend $50,000 just to take down the buildings. If you close the course and maintain it as open park space, for every 100 acres, it's about $150,000 to maintain open park space. And so we sort of use that as a rule of thumb. If you're going to lose less than $150,000, you should probably maintain it as a golf course. You could extend the lease and help the Pruitt's and get, you know, the 2% of revenue. You could buy out the lease and operate it without any improvements. You're going to lose money ad infinitum. And as you can see, as we continue to incur greater debt, I show you what the amortization of the debt will be five years from now. But when we look out, buy out the lease and operate 18 with a clubhouse renovation, a new clubhouse, you're likely to lose $600,000 a year after spending $11.5 million. So if we looked at the facilities, it's interesting. The land there is actually could be made into a really good, fun golf course. But if we look at the poor green quality that now exists, the deteriorating infrastructure to rebuild bunkers, it's about $400,000. If we look at the power line conflict, you'd have to bury the power lines to be able to attract the golfer that would be willing to pay sufficient funds. If we look at the bridge, this is a liability. I mean, if... I was talking with an homeowner today out on that third and sixth hole combination, and he walks his dog there, and we both said, "All somebody has to do is go over that railing or it'd fail, and the check you're going to write's going to be huge. That bridge is a liability that needs to be addressed." This was a picture taken in May. The group today, when I was there at 2:45, they teed off from these front tees, because if you tee off from the back tees, the canopy now is only about 15 yards wide. I would challenge Jordan Spieth to put the ball through the canopy that exists for Dustin Johnson. And so when we look at, there's a formula, value equals experience minus price. Your price is $20, but the experience is probably less than that. That's why you have the attrition. The irrigation system is failing. A study was done, it's $1.5 million. Nine holes, you're going to have to spend 3/4 of a million dollars putting in the irrigation system. You've got 35 excess acres. How could that be repositioned? And so a golf course has a life cycle. The greens have got to be rebuilt from scratch at about $900,000 every 30 years. You can see the life of bunker sands, five to seven years, the practice range tees, the corrugated metal pipes, the mulch, the grasses. You're basically starting over if you were to buy the golf course, because your highest priorities are replace the irrigation system, improve the greens, upgrade the tee, renovate the bunkers, engage in tree management, not only 3, 4, 5, 6, 13, 14, 15. The new clubhouse with the improved entry, in today's society, millennials, that's not really an attractive place to go and hang out. When you compare it to Prairie Highlands, it's 2.6 miles away. They've got all kinds of video games in the bar. So this is one possibility. For $1,050,000, you could take the front nine holes. Could you put homes along Gardner West and sell some lots? Could you put ball fields and soccer fields? Could you put a hiking trail on what's 13, 14, 15? Put in a skate park? Could you put in zip line? You've got the terrain to put in. In Castle Rock, the city of Castle Rock, you wouldn't believe the amount of money they make off the zip lines. You've got the terrain, and so there's a possibility of diversifying the amenity, of keeping golf for these fine people. And at the same time, after you've spent $1 million, in finding, you would have to issue an RFP. And I know the Pruitt's would certainly want to respond. Because there were prior conversations with Great Life, I was asked to reach out to that company that has 26 courses in South Dakota, 13,000 in this marketplace, and they have a fitness concept where you pay a monthly fee, starting at $159 upwards, and it gives you free golf for the community. And as much as I said that I wanted something at a strategic high level, this is not an offer from them, it would have to be bid, but we just tried to frame the conversation. The irrigation system, the city would have to write the check. They have zoysia farms, so they could replant the greens and the tee boxes and the fairways. They could fill in the bunkers, and you can see what they're willing to share in the financial cost of. Optional would be a maintenance building. Old clubhouse removed, optional. Personally, I think both of those are required. But this just gives you an idea as to the opportunities and potential. Because the question is, what could you use that land for? What are the multi-uses? Could you put in a trail system, outdoor festival? The city and county of Denver just approved last Thursday, they're taking one of their golf courses and turning it into Sturgis for a month, with bands coming in and rock concerts at Overland Park. It's the oldest golf course west of the Mississippi, built in 1892. Could you put in a mountain bike skills course? And so pictures like this that you see, this is a young community. Could you have something like an extended driving range? Could we put a focus on women golfers with this nine-hole? Could we do something for those that are disabled to provide them leisure? Could we have ironic things that are unique, like bicycles? Or like when I was in Hawaii, I rode a surfboard on a golf course. They rent for $25, and you just put your clubs on the back, and it's got a handle, and you literally have to move it by surfing your feet. Or could you use it for multiple facilities? Open park space, close it, commercial, residential. Do you do something non-traditional? Topgolf, is a $12.5 million investment? First-year net income, $25 million. It's off the chart. It's just off the chart in what this does for a community. So the big vision is you could rebuild the entire facility, maximize the unused land. And we've actually, Andy Staples sat down and said, "If we were to build a course to compete against Sycamore Ridge and start selling some lots and keeping some open space, how would we reroute the course?" And so he penciled out some drawings and say, if you have a big vision, there is an answer. So we looked at the customers, and here are the zip codes, 66030. And this was sent out based on the assistance of the city to the email list. The communications director was very helpful in putting it on Facebook and LinkedIn. And what we found in the survey of all respondents, 54% were male. The average age was 11 years higher than the average resident in Gardner, and their average income was $93,000. We got the golfers. Caucasian, 94%. The benchmark, I don't even know why I asked this question in surveys, because when I ask the question, to what standard should the golf course be held, the number one answer we always get is it's an important recreational asset, as everybody here will testify in the public comments session tonight, and like other parks and recs, they want you to fund it out of the general fund. It's always the number one answer when asked. If it were unsustainable, what would they prefer to do? Convert nine or more holes into other facilities, community centers, soccer fields. You see, the concept is selling the land, less than 5%, either for residential or commercial. Retain the management, that's not a viable option, as you're going to hear in a minute. And what interest level did they have? And you can see in terms of the 500 responses, 27% had no interest, and 6%, so 31%, about 150 people had no interest in the game of golf in responding to the survey. So what about the golfers? They play one to four courses. This is lower than most. The answer is usually five to eight, meaning that they're actually playing at this golf course. And as a matter of fact, the survey of the 15,000 rounds, we had survey respondents that played about 5,200. So we got about a third of the rounds playing there. What are the primary barriers? Time or no barrier? Look at money. Less than 20% said money was an issue. What factors are important? Price and course condition. Would you recommend? This is the Harvard Reichelt, the car rental question, that he was hired for National Car Rental to ask the question, and it's now become a standard. Would you recommend the course to family, friends, or associates? And so there was over 500 people with a zip code of 030, rank ordered Gardner next to, just above Oak Creek and Burning Tree. And you can see Prairie Highlands, which is the 2.6 miles, Sycamore Ridge, Falcon Ridge, St. Andrews, Tomahawk Ridge, which, when I visited all of these golf courses as part of this review, and I really liked Tomahawk Ridge. What do they like best about Gardner? The price. But what did the non-golfers say? If your local municipal golf were to position itself to appeal to 100% of the community rather than just golf, but it still lost money, would you be more than willing to support it? Two-thirds of the residents said yes. So therefore, if we have other activities, you would get some support. So the scope of our review was to answer the following questions. Should the city assume operation of the golf course when the lease expires in August 2018? I'm a CPA. I've got an MBA in finance. Councilman Schut, Councilman Milton, Councilman Winters, Councilman Harrison, Councilman Moore. If the five of us were getting together and say, do we write a check that will generate a return on investment? My answer is no. But I'm not measuring the intangible value of serving the citizens in this community that have to go into your decision process also. Does it make economic sense to buy out the lease? As much as I like Jim and Kurt, I think that answer is unfortunately no, because the equipment is that Scranton has no continuing value. The clubhouse, if you were to do something and renovate it, you'd want to find something better and make it more competitive, based on the quality that you're trying to create here in the city of Gardner. Is the golf course a viable economic entity that is currently operating? You saw the potential, there's only 750,000 gross income. The average municipality does 1.1 million, while the cash flow's $200,000. The average maintenance budget in municipality to run it correctly is about $500,000. You can see why you're going to lose money if you get involved in it. Is the supply sufficient to serve the residents within reasonable proximity? Yes. They can drive 10 miles. Prairie Highlands is a very nice golf course. Sycamore Ridge is great. Would a national management company have an interest in overseeing the operation? The answer is no. Kemper, Casper, they only begin having an interest in a course that has the potential of a million and a half dollars. Don't even need to issue an RFP. Is there a third-party lease that may have an interest in leasing the golf course from the city? Kurt's very spry. He may have a continuing interest, especially if there's financial support from the city. Great Life Golf has 13 courses, they're in attendance tonight with Stephanie. They may be looking to expand. In talking with them, there's some shared costs that they're willing to engage in. But this would have to be part of an RFP. And if there was a third party, what capital would the city have to invest? You pick the number, it starts at 25,000 and can go all the way up to 11.5 million dollars. But to have a course that's competitive with Johnson County, you're going to probably have to write a check for 3 million. One and a half for irrigation, rebuild greens, rebuild tees, bring in a GE rental unit in terms of a duplex, biplex unit to make it fun. So with that having been said, let's see if we can get some agreement tonight as to what are the three things that you should debate amongst yourself privately as a result of this workshop to bring before council going forward? I love this. If I had asked people what they wanted, they would have said faster horses. If you ask everybody in this audience what they want, they want you to write the check to enhance the golf course, to take over the management, and provide them a recreational leisure at the current prices or perhaps slightly higher. Your call. What direction do you want to go? And here are the three questions that you need to answer. Is there a compelling need to have a golf course? Once you answer that question, if the answer is yes, you have a compelling need, is city council willing to provide the capital to the golf course? So even while there may be a compelling need, if you say no, there's nobody that's going to come in here and build a golf course. So if you say yes to the first, and yes, you're willing to provide capital of some amount, is it nine or 18? Nine's probably the right answer. We weren't routine to do the highest and best use of that land. I'm not a park and rec expert. Golf, I'll go up against anybody. Parks and rec, soccer fields, ball fields, zip lines. There was a sports study that could have been done for $100,000 that was dismissed, but I've reached out to professional accredited parks and rec firms, and for less than $20,000, they can come in and do a complete analysis of the alternative uses of that land as it fits as part of your master plan that was developed in 2001, and would make sense before you reach a decision of close, open park space. So we've hopefully built a bridge for your success in this community. What questions can I answer for you?
Go ahead.
You put on there 1 million or 3 million to make it competitive on the investment we would need to make. At the one, I mean, if we're hiring someone or taking on a lease, leaser, what would be the difference between the 1 million and the 3 million?
The amount of renovation undertaken in terms of rebuilding bunkers from scratch merely than just dragging and scraping stand, rebuilding the greens from scratch, expanding the green complexes to the original design, the tree mitigation would be more expensive. And the 1 million was looking at a nine-hole golf course. The 3 million, we're talking, Councilman Winters, at an 18-hole golf course, and starting with a million and a half just for the irrigation system. The green complexes would be another $800,000. The tees, that's where you get to the 3 million, in renovating the course to make it playable so it could compete against an Overland Park or Tomahawk Ridge or Prairie Highlands. And you could invest 3 million and you still would not be competitive Sycamore Ridge or Prairie Highlands. They're very good golf courses, and the clubhouses work very effectively in drawing in additional revenue.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Thank you very much for your presentation, it was excellent. A couple of things. There was a statistic that was on one of the previous slides about, it was like 3/4 of all golf courses now that are in the United States are municipal courses, or are not, are public courses, is that correct?
75% of all courses in the country now are public golf courses. The history of municipal golf, there's 2,200 municipal golf courses in the country. Golf started in 1870, and it was all private clubs, built for the elite. And it wasn't until the early 1890s did the city of New York at Cortland Park say that this is an amenity that we should provide to the citizens, and that was built, which then followed Overland Park and Patty Jewett, too, in Denver, ironically, were like the third and the fifth courses built that were municipal oriented. Today, we're up to 2,200 municipal courses, about 9,000 daily fee courses. And a trivia question, if you want to, if you're at a bar and want to make a bet some night, are there more private clubs in America today or during the Depression? You'd probably say today, you'd lose the bet. There's about 600 less private clubs today than there were during the Depression. A lot of that public inventory is coming from the conversion of the private course because they're not economically viable, and they themselves are struggling. All you need to do is read about how they're turning into community centers, where there used to be, you'd know denim allowed. At the Union League Club of Chicago, they've just authorized denim through the entire facility and hats on backwards. So we're seeing a changing culture in our society that speaks to, frankly, what Great Life is doing in terms of offering alternatives of fitness and other activities beyond just golf.
So as a follow-up to that.
Yes.
When we're looking at the composition of public courses, when we're looking at the actual number of holes in those courses, I know that a lot of them are being converted into executive and nine-hole courses because of the fact that, as you mentioned before, full-length 18-hole courses, not nearly as viable now as it was, let's say, 30 years ago. The other thing is the membership model, which is what we've talked about here, is even in public courses, you can have memberships. Memberships might make sense for, and we had actually thought about potentially doing a membership model for Gardner Course, but what you're telling me here is that that may not necessarily be a viable option either.
Councilman Schut, I personally oppose the membership model at a public golf course for the following reason. We've actually been retained by the city of Arlington, they just did a $12 million expansion on their golf course, it's going to open November 1, and they, we're going to help them set the prices. And one of the reasons we're hired is to speak to, the membership model does not make sense for the following reason. How many rounds of golf is that based on to create a break-even point where the customer's going to buy it? And what we find is that somebody loses. The person that buys the pass and plays 80, 90, and 100 rounds becomes resented by the staff for their abuse of the pass. And the person that only pays five or 10 or 15 rounds resents the course for having sold something that they did not get value. So creating a loyalty program of buying a ticket for 100 or 150 or $200, that gets them a 10 or 20 or 30% discount based on the volume of rounds they played, is a better model than the unlimited season pass.
And I've heard that, too. I've heard that doing like a, something like a, you know, like a discount model would be a better, would be a better option.
In fairness and equity, 78% of municipalities have an unlimited season play pass or a membership program, but as we go around the country, that's one of our things that we're trying to change, because our whole focus is how do you create value for these golfers, for them to play?
Sure.
On a basis that is financially self-sustaining. But financially self-sustaining is how much are you willing to underwrite the annual loss?
And that's, and there's going to be a subsidy regardless, and I think we understand that.
Here at Gardner and nine-hole, there will be a subsidy.
And so the question is, you know, do we take a smaller subsidy for a nine-hole course? And we might be able to run a higher quality, to be able to compete with some of these other offerings, or, and find somebody who's a third party who can come in and actually administer or run the course? Because I'm not interested, to be honest with you, in us managing a course. I just, that to me is a significant losing proposition, based on everything I've read and seen.
That's very astute. I actually am publishing in our August newsletter, the 12 benchmarks on which a municipality gets in trouble if it owns a golf course, and having city employees based on your fringe benefit package, if you're above 24% in fringe benefits on a golf course, you're economically not going to make it. We just finished Albuquerque, they're at 54% fringe benefit percentage. New Braunfels was 47% by having city employees. They were spending $220,000 in fringe benefits on the staff. And so that's what led us to write the RFPs to privatize both of those operations.
So I have a question. Do you think that a clubhouse in itself, if we were able to get a very nice clubhouse built out there with the right people managing it, a restaurant and all that, would that help drive the business to the golf course? Or get maybe a developer interested in partnering with us? Because I thought, I was going to bring this up at council updates, I thought really the most valuable thing out there really is the land. So I thought maybe what we should do is offer like a long-term lease, 99 years or whatever, somebody builds a building, we basically lease that to them, saying here, this land, you know, is ours, we're going to lease this to you for long-term, and with the requirement that they build a facility and manage it, and if there's a problem, then we can take it back over and get a tenant. Have you ever seen anything like that with a golf course?
City of Golden, Colorado would be, they do $2.1 million in just their F&amp;B in operation, but it overlooks the Coors Brewery, and it's right at the foothills, so weddings and banquets and kuanas and Chamber of Commerce, that it becomes almost the center. But the question becomes, Councilman Milton, is, are you, are you involved in private enterprise by, you know, spending the money to build it, or should the developer build it themselves?
My goal was the developer builds it, and that's where we're giving him the land and the managing rights.
Part of pursuit.
Because he's not going to pay us anything for, you know, any kind of monthly fees, it's just going to be the building is what he's going to do.
The skin of the game would be the building.
You would have to go to Denver, Colorado, and IKEA, where the city of Centennial gave the land for IKEA to come in, and they waived the sales taxes for 10 years based on the employment. So these public-private partnerships are absolutely in play.
That might be the easy way for us to get somebody at least kind of on the hook. I mean, if we, especially if we have to convert over to an island, we have a lot of extra land also for.
For other developments.
Other developments.
One of the things I really want to emphasize in terms of the vision is that, while I've had a lot of statistics about golf is struggling, between the ages of six and 18, in America today, the percentage of participation of the youth is double what it was when I was a youth. The PGA Junior League, the Get Golf Ready, Girls in Schools program, and in a community with an average age of 33.7, having a recreational amenity that was youth-oriented with a clubhouse, with teaching, the PGA Junior League's marvelous. I just heard today that you're involved in multiple volleyball with different cities across this part of southwestern Kansas City. There are leagues that are occurring in Denver right now between the municipalities going from, based on PGA Junior League teams playing, six to 18-year-olds. And it's like $200 for the kid to join, and off they go, and they get 12 lessons and, you know, competitive matches. So in this community at 33.7, I'd be looking at, how do I take the nine holes? How do I reposition the land? How do I make the clubhouse attractive? Because as this town grows, the number of restaurants currently where you could have a wedding or a banquet or something is limited.
Very, very.
I teasingly say, in economic development, if I was on city council, I'd be putting in a stoplight by Kentucky Fried Chicken, QT, and Sonic. Getting out of there is a challenge.
You just touched on something that's very, very important, and that is meeting space and gathering space in this community is very, very limited.
Right.
We just signed a agreement to get a hotel built on the east side of town. One of the big stipulations in that agreement was that they would build a community, a conference center for us, because we didn't have a place in the city limits to be able to have large gatherings. So a clubhouse that could, that could double as a wedding and banquet facility, and something that's really nice and showcase location with the nine holes and with some additional amenities. And then I was going to ask you another question, I think there's a concern about, from some of the golfers, that there would be a drop-off in rounds because of the fact that people don't like to play nine-hole courses. And the question I have is, you know, from the standpoint of even having our high schoolers, they play golf out of our golf club. Have you seen any of that? Have you seen any situations where if you shrink it to nine holes, up the quality, that there would be a problem with, with having golfers balk at that?
There will be a small attrition in rounds. There will be a small attrition in rounds of about 10%. So if you're doing 25,000 starts, and a start, most people think a round is 18 holes. You pay the money and you played 18 holes. It merely means, when you look at these round numbers of the 30,000 nationally, one person left the first or 10th tee and played one hole. And so the number of 18-hole equivalents, I think you would see a 10% reduction in total. But I do want to come back as the economic potential is about $747,000. And by putting in multiple sets of tees with different angles, I just played a course in Michigan called The Loop that's Tom Doak did, it's just fabulous. You just play it one way and one day and you play it in reverse the other day. All kinds of things that can be done with a nine-hole golf course and tee complexes. Yes, there will be some attrition. But economically, along with the concept of the clubhouse as a place for the junior and youth, I think it makes sense. Further thoughts?
Well, I'm, you know, the thing that I was taking away from one of your last slides was, you know, you had three questions.
Yes.
And two of them are obviously something that we need to decide here. But the first one, considering what you've put in and the great job that you've done today, I think you can probably give us your opinion anyway. And that is whether or not there is a compelling need for this in Gardner.
The answer, Mayor, is strictly looked on a financial basis, on a return on investment of capital of the city's taxpayer resources, I would say no. That there is a cost. I am not in the position to comment on what is the intangible value of having that investment with respect to economic development. Cheryl Harrison Lee is such a proponent of, I can't speak to your value system in terms of the intangible value. But for us as a team to write a check?
No. And I understand, and I say this, being not much of a golfer, gave it up pretty early in life, but I love the game. You and I have talked before, I mean, I caddied as a child, not a child, a young man, at private courses, caddying for Tom Watson six times. I really enjoy the game. I actually will turn it on and watch on the weekend. I'm one of those guys. Will go and attend any kind of, you know, function at a golf course, in a tournament that's for charity, that I get an opportunity to attend. But that's certainly a stark answer. Now, I think that we've got to get another, and Governor Potty can tell me what they, I think we've got to get another work session and, and answer these questions and probably have a, or even another town hall with the golfers, just to give them an opportunity to weigh in. But, but those are the three, I think those are exactly the three questions that need to be answered. And I appreciate, Jezz, it's tough. You're a golfer, you love the game, you're standing in front of a room full of golfers.
Yes.
It's got to be hard to say that. But I appreciate your honesty. So is there anybody else that doesn't think maybe we need a work session this at least one more time to make a determination about these questions that he asked?
Well, the good news is that we have plenty of time. And, you know, the lease doesn't expire until 2018. And given what you have said, that now buying out the lease is probably not in our best interest. So we do have some opportunities here to have more dialogue on this. I will say this, the current 18-hole configuration, trying to manage that and maintain it, and even with a third-party, is absolutely cost prohibitive. And everything I've read, everything I've seen, my father golfed, you know, every day for the last 30 years of his life. He was, he was, and the last three courses that he golfed at, all closed. Every single one of them closed. They're not in business anymore. So the 18-hole concept is a, is an endangered species, it just is. And except for those areas that are just, that have the best demographics, nine holes are viable, although there is a subsidy and we have to understand that.
One other thing that I would say, and not that I'm necessarily a proponent of this, but I think to be balanced, one of the discussions that we have to have is, what happens if we sell the land? I mean, it is, that is a, another option. And is that something during the next work session that we should be prepared to understand what that value looks like?
And that's kind of what I, you know, whether it's nine holes and we do something with the other nine area or we, just nothing, we still need to figure something to do with the land.
Yeah, we need to understand the value, what, at least at this point in time, that value of that land is.
And the issue that we've got, again, is going to come back to us and haunt us again is, we don't own the mineral rights, we don't own the subsurface rights. So that's going to immediately diminish the, not that we can get from that land.
From the developer's perspective, that makes sense.
Yeah. That's, you know, there's, we do have some active wells, some that are inactive, but it's not something that can't be overcome. Actually, I believe you had a slide in there about the acreage that is probably prime for sale and development. How many acres was that?
35.
So that's a possibility as well. So I say we have another work session. We answer the three questions that he thinks we need to answer, and we start talking about next steps, whatever those might be. But, you know, I encourage all of the members of the governing body to talk with constituents, including our friends that play golf, and get some ideas for what we think the property's appropriate for, and do some research. Anybody else have anything? We do have a little bit of a time issue. We could go up to seven, but I know we're expecting a large crowd at 7 o'clock as well. So unless anybody else has a, something else, Jezz, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank Scott Gary and Cheryl Harrison Lee, and they have been very, very helpful. And every time you come into a city, it's like a Sudoku puddle or that Rubik's Cube, and they've helped me sort of get this straightened out based on your vision and your priorities to city council, so to Scott and to Cheryl Harrison Lee, I'd like to thank them. They made it possible.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jezz. Appreciate it.
All right. Now, everybody take five.[1787.11]